I'm taking my mask off because there's nobody else in this room here. I would like to call the December twenty first Common Council Agenda Meeting to Order. It is six oh two. Councilman Vincent, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthum.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Cutler.
She's muted.
Oh, she's muted.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Zed.
Sorry. Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Right.
Councilwoman Kaneshney.
Here.
All present.
Thank you Clerk Treasurer Parthum. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes seven zero. We will be taking petitions and comments from the public and our citizens throughout the meeting as of right now. Do we have any attorney notice?
No comments at this time. I'll continue to monitor.
Let's move to standing committee reports. Councilwoman West.
The Fire Merit Commission met in December and would like to report that all performance ratings are complete and their next meeting will be Wednesday, January sixth.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilman Vincent.
The next meeting of our Plan Commission would be at six P M. at City Hall on Tuesday, January twelfth. That's it.
Councilman Frankie.
The School Board met on the fourteenth, so last week, and the big news there was the discussion of switching up how they're operating under the color level statuses. Sounds like red would still see three days a week and orange will be going to five days a week if I understand it correctly. That was, that was the big item on the agenda and the Redevelopment Commission meets next Wednesday at five fifteen P M. That will be live streamed. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on December sixteenth. Phil Graff from Great Lakes Urban Forest Management gave a tree inventory for all managed trees in the city parks. The data collected includes GPS of the trees in the managed areas, species, sizes, conditions, standard defects, and maintenance recommendations. Bike Pool Promotions won the twenty twenty one teacher bid. The board decided to renegotiate the Pine Lake Boat Dock launch contract with Seabreeze Marina. A request for proposal regarding Stone Lake Boat Docks went out on Friday. There will be no change in greens, green speeds, cart rental fees, or daily fees, but there will be a twenty five dollar increase in the twenty twenty one Beechwood membership fees, and that was approved by the board. There hasn't been an increase in those fees since two thousand eighteen. Also, approval was given to renew Beechwood Pro Kyle Kazmers contract. The board also approved an encumbrance to pay for auditorium lights and sound improvements in the auditorium. And as of right now, Winterfest twenty twenty is still scheduled to take place. Phil permission was given for horses to be allowed at Usholders Memorial Park on January thirty first from one to four P M.
Councilwoman Kaneshney.
The Airport Authority met on Wednesday, December ninth. It has been reaffirmed that even with COVID charter flights have increased. While commercials still seems to be struggling, charters seem to be prevalent. Makes sense with social distancing, smaller groups and things like that. Also too, they were greatly anticipating the launch of their new website, which has since been released. It looks fantastic and I know that they're certainly excited for that. The Tree Commission met on Thursday, December seventeenth. A lot of things were discussed during that meeting, mainly that between the city, the bid and Parks Department, they're going to be working together to help manage the tree canopy. There's going to be a huge push to expand our tree canopy in the next upcoming years. Also too, the commission is in the process of drafting goals and the commission's going to shift focus a bit, a little bit more from the planting and so forth, but more so about education and engagement with the constituents. So exciting stuff and more news to follow in the upcoming months.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Mayor Commission met on December eighth. There was nothing worth writing down. They just met and I talked to Councilman Frankie. There was nothing worth reporting.
We will now move to council appointments to boards and commissions. The council does have some appointments to make. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Do I have any appointment nominations?
For the Redevelopment Commission, I move to reappoint J T.
Frankie, I think, hold on, I think Councilwoman Cutler may have been speaking before and it was on mute. Mute. No?
Well, it's okay. My mic is going in and out.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Frankie.
For the Redevelopment Commission, I move to reappoint J T McDermott and Brian Chalick to their terms for one year.
Second.
Second.
Do I do have the motion and the second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Do I have another nomination?
Or the report.
Oh.
Councilwoman Cutler.
I move to reappoint the following members to the bid board for another term. Brad Adamsky, Jim Kaminsky, Clinton Worthington, and Robin Clark.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Laura Cutler if she is willing to serve on the LaPorte Alcohol Beverage Review Commission for another year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Any further nominations? Hearing none, we'll move through to the council approval for the twenty twenty one meeting schedule. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the meeting schedule is presented.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. As you will notice, there is not an election day off here in twenty twenty one because there's not an election in twenty twenty one, which I'm sure everybody's happy, happy about. I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Ficus, petition to vacate a public way.
Yes, I, Your Honor, I'd like to read a petition. It's a petition to vacate a public way in LaPorte County, Indiana. Comes now petitioners Timothy Ludlow and Sylvia Espinoza and file a petition to vacate a portion of K Street between twenty third and twenty fourth streets, a public right of way that was never paved and show the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana as follows. One, that petitioners seek to have a portion of K Street between twenty third and twenty fourth streets vacated. That portion of the proposed vacated street is depicted on Exhibit A. Two, no property owners will be denied access to their property as a result of the vacation of the described street. Three, the property owners of land abutting the property proposed to be vacated are Timothy Ludlow, petitioner, nine zero eight Virginia Ave, LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five zero. Sylvia Espinoza, petitioner, nine zero eight Virginia Ave, LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five zero. LaPorte Municipal Airport Authority, two three four one, Indiana thirty nine, LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five zero. Dallas and Marilyn Pavy, one zero zero three West Twenty Fourth Street, LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five zero. Brenda Bryan, one zero zero six West Twenty Third Street, LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five zero. And Brenda Bryan, P O V O X one ninety, Kingsford Heights, Indiana, four six three four six. Four, the petitioners desire that the street be vacated as it does not serve a public interest and once vacated, the property will provide what is in the best interests of the public by belonging to the abutting and adjoining property owners. The road is not necessary nor desirable for public traffic. Five, there are no utilities in this right of way. Six, the vacation of the road will not damage in any way the adjoining or abutting properties. Seven, the vacation will not hinder the public access to church, school, public building, or place. Eight, the vacation will not hinder the development of the area. It will not hinder in any way the access of abutting or adjoining landowners to their property. Wherefore, the petitioner respectfully requests that the Common Council of the City of LaPorte adopt an ordinance vacating said property as described above. Respectfully submitted, Timothy Ludlow and Sylvia Espinoza.
So before I take a motion, is there, Carol, or Councilwoman Ficus, would you like to explain this in simple term or is there somebody that would like to explain what this is doing?
Yeah, this didn't come before traffic commission, so I don't know if attorney notice may want to.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do this. This is obviously a vacation of K Street between twenty third and twenty fourth. You should have from me an email, kind of an overhead view from Beacon that shows the portion that is going to be vacated. I do have Sylvia is here tonight. That's who I was communicating with. This has never been a road. It is never, we have no utilities running under it and it does not go anywhere. We have no plans to have it go anywhere. And so I've talked with the various department heads. What will happen? This is a north-south road, so it would vacate and half of the, I guess, the western half would go to to Tim and Sylvia and then the eastern half of it would go to the two adjacent owners on that side, so.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
There's nothing to vote on tonight, Mayor. So we'll bring back before you an ordinance, probably not at the first January meeting, likely at the second one, just from how it works out time-wise.
Are there any concerns or questions?
What's the size of the land?
That the city would be vacating?
Yeah.
So, good, good question. You know, it's the width of a city street and it's, it's, you know, what, a block? Sylvia, did you want to offer?
One block long.
Yeah. So how wide would you describe? Is it, is it thirty feet, twenty-five feet?
Probably thirty feet, however wide a city street is.
Yeah. And Sylvia, did?
Variances.
Just looking at the overhead, what's there right now, if you don't mind explaining to the, to the council?
A line of trees.
Okay.
That have been overgrown.
Who, who made?
Mister Pavy, Mister Pavy has sort of cut back where his is, where his property is. He's been maintaining that. Twenty fourth street has never, there's never been a street there, so really, the, and last year the property was vacated for the airport. The twenty fourth street wasn't vacated, but the property that would have abutted twenty fourth street was vacated for the, the airport. And we abut what would have been twenty fourth street. That was never, that was never paved either. So there's a line of scrub trees in there and that's about it.
You, you guys have any specific plans for this property at all, Sylvia?
We considered building on it. Right now, we don't have anything, but if we do, there, we would probably put a driveway in where the street would have been.
Okay.
Any other questions? We will then, attorney notice will bring this back most likely for the February City Council meeting within August.
I'll have to double check the timing. I think we can bring it back at the second January meet. There's a specific statutory timeline that we have to follow. If I work with Sylvia on this, I've been in communication with her.
Sylvia, always great to see you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Tom.
Tonight and Merry Christmas to you and we will bring that back in twenty twenty one.
And to all of you as well and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman West, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Right.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Councilwoman West.
An ordinance amending ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty of the City of LaPorte, Indiana to establish salary for a new position in the Engineering Department and amending positions in the Community Development and Planning Department and Housing and Building Code Enforcement Department. Be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana that Section One, Ordinance Number twenty dash twenty twenty of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, adopted by the Common Council on October fifth, twenty twenty, is hereby amended to delete the following positions. Community Development and Planning, the Administrative Assistant, thirty-six thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. Housing and Building Code Enforcement Laborer would be thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. And by adding the following positions, Engineering Department, which would be an Engineering Technician, forty thousand dollars. Under Community Development and Planning would be an Assistant Planner at thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And Housing and Building Code Enforcement would be a Code Compliance Officer Level Two position at thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Section two, in all other regards, ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty shall be unchanged. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion? Questions? Now, I would like to say the Engineering Technician, what we've done is the council had approved two positions for code enforcement for twenty twenty one. We believe the minimum addition for of at least one in that position needs to happen, but as well with the Engineering Department with as many, as much activity and development as we have going on in the City of LaPorte, there needs to be an Engineering Technician to free up Nick Minnick to focus on what's most important, designing projects and be able to keep that department's head above water. So we are moving thirty thousand dollars from the second Code Compliance Officer position, moving that to the Technician and then the remaining ten thousand would be paid out of the Engineering Department. But we think that's, those two positions are necessary. And then the Assistant Planner is more, I believe, just of a title change in the position than anything else. Any questions? Hearing none, we will bring that back the first meeting in January. Councilwoman Kaneshney, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Councilwoman Kaneshney.
An ordinance approving twenty twenty one budget for the City of LaPorte Water Department, whereas the Water Department has submitted its proposed budget for the year twenty twenty one and whereas the said budget is subject to approval by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte and whereas the Common Council of the City of LaPorte determines that said budget be approved. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana as follows. Section one, that the budget is submitted for by the Water Department for the year twenty twenty one be and is hereby approved as submitted. Section two, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor and publication as provided by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion? I would like to think and hopefully Clerk Treasurer Parthum would speak on this, but I believe this is the first time that both Water and Sewer have had to put a budget before the council and I think that's great work by our Clerk Treasurer. Clerk Treasurer Parthum, would you like to add anything?
The Water and Waste Water Departments have submitted budgets for council, but it's never been, it's, it's never been laid out like it is this year. So what will happen is just as the council gets appropriation reports, fund reports and revenue reports for all of the other departments and you can track throughout the year where each appropriation is. For twenty twenty one, you will be able to do that for Water and Waste Water, which is the goal. So while you'll see the proposed dollar amounts for these, well, for the Water Department, the proposed budget went up a little bit from seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We also have new bond payments and other items that we're just not sure of yet. So yes, we will be tracking and you will see on appropriation reports where we are throughout the year and it's, yes, it's the first, it's the first time that we'll be able to track throughout the year. So this is, as I told Tim Warner and Jerry Jackson, this is just kind of a test run, but no time is better than the present, so we're excited about it.
And again, we're demanding accountability, especially during the tough times for everybody. So this is, Water and Sewer should have to follow those same requirements and we're excited and they've been supportive of it as well. So any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Galloway, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce an ordinance for the first time in its entirety.
Right.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Councilman Galloway.
An ordinance approving twenty twenty one budget for the City of LaPorte Waste Water Department, whereas the Waste Water Department has submitted its proposed budget for the year twenty twenty one and whereas the said budget is subject to approval by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte and whereas the Common Council of the City of LaPorte determines that said budget be approved. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana as follows. Section one, that the budget as submitted by the, submitted for the Waste Water Department for the year twenty twenty one be and is hereby approved as submitted. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor and publication as provided by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion? Again, thanks to Clerk Treasurer Parthum. This is the first as well for Waste Water. Anything to add there? All right.
The water, yep. Thank you.
We will move to Councilman Frankie, introduction of a resolution.
Yeah, I move to introduce a resolution read in its entirety for the first time.
I can hear.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Councilman Frankie.
Resolution to transfer funds within the twenty twenty budgets, whereas there are additional monies needed and certain line items in the twenty twenty budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year twenty twenty. General, Board of Works from three twenty-one Communication Transportation to three fifty-one Utilities, four thousand dollars. From three twenty-one Communication Transportation to three ninety-one Other Services, one thousand dollars. City Hall from two thirty-one Repairs and Maintenance to three fifteen Professional Services, one hundred and fifty dollars. From two thirty-one Repairs and Maintenance to three sixty-one Repairs and Maintenance, one thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Engineering, from two thirty-one Repairs and Maintenance to two eleven Office Supplies, one hundred dollars. From two thirty-one Repairs and Maintenance to three sixty-one Repairs and Maintenance, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. From two thirty-one Repairs and Maintenance to three hundred and ninety-one Other Services, one hundred dollars. From three twelve Engineering Services to three sixty-one Repairs and Maintenance, one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Code Enforcement, from three sixty-one Repairs and Maintenance to three ninety-one Other Services, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Fire, from one hundred and eleven Salaries to two twenty-one Operating Supplies, eight hundred dollars. From one eleven Salaries to three fifty-one Utilities, two hundred dollars. From two thirty-one Repairs and Maintenance to three sixty-one Repairs and Maintenance, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Police, from one hundred and eleven Salaries to four hundred and fifty-one Other Capital Outlays, seventy-six thousand dollars. From two twenty-one Operating Supplies to four fifty-one Other Capital Outlays, thirty thousand dollars. From three sixty-one Repairs and Maintenance to four fifty-one Other Capital Outlays, thirty-five thousand dollars. From one twenty-four Pensions to one thirty-one Clothing Allowance, one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. Motor Vehicle Highway, from two thirty-one point zero one five Repairs and Maintenance to three ninety-one Other Services, seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. From four fifty-one Equipment Lease to four fifty-one point zero one four Machinery and Equipment, fifty-five thousand dollars. End of resolution.
So this is a reservation that can pass this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Councilwoman, or I'm sorry, Clerk Treasurer Parthum, anything to add?
No, you'll just see that we're cleaning up the, the appropriations listed within this resolution. And as you all know from last council meeting and prior, budgets are estimates, so this is, this is it. This is it for the year. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Councilman Vincent, introduction of a resolution.
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce a resolution this evening, read in its entirety for the first time. Thank you.
A motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Councilman Vincent.
This is our resolution to encumber funds. Whereas the Clerk Treasurer has identified the following amounts of twenty twenty appropriations encumbered in order to meet obligations for payments which have been incurred and will not be paid at the close of business, December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana that the following encumbrances be made within the following budgets of the year twenty twenty. General, Board of Works, Budget one oh one dash oh seven seven dash three two one for the City of LaPorte Transport, fourth quarter local match, sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. City Attorney, Budget one oh one dash two seven zero dash three one one, Munich Code, three thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cents. For the Fire Department, Item one oh one dash three six two dash one three one, Hoosier Fire Equipment, five thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Budget Item one oh one dash three six two dash three six five, LaPorte Chrysler, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. For our Police Department, Budget Item one oh one dash three seven zero dash four five one, Stalker Radar, the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. Budget Item one oh one, three seven zero dash four five one, also for Stalker Radar, twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Budget one oh one, three seven zero dash four five one for LaPorte Chrysler, thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty-four cents. Budget Item one oh one dash three seven zero dash four five one, Think Tank, N A S Backup Camera Cloud in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and five, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. Budget one oh one dash three seven zero dash. Budget one oh one dash three seven zero dash four five one, DNR electronics company eliminated, limited, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and thirty cents. Budget one oh one, three seven zero four five one for think tank, email migration to office three sixty-five, amount of eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Budget one oh one dash three seven zero dash four five one, LaPorte Chrysler, for police cars, sixty thousand. Budget one oh one dash three seven zero dash four five one, sign deals delivered, decals for police cars, in the amount of five thousand dollars. Of for COVID, uh, budget item one oh one dash oh six nine dash two nine zero point zero zero one. Uh, Stryker medical, in the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, item one oh one dash oh six nine dash two nine zero point zero zero one for Larson Danielson, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Item one oh one dash oh six nine dash two nine zero point oh one, for big ass fans, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Budget item one oh one dash oh six nine dash four four one point zero one five, LaPorte Chrysler, in the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Budget item one oh one dash oh six nine dash four four one point oh one five, for Herman and Goetz, in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Budget item one oh one dash oh six nine dash four four one point oh one five for think tank, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. Line item one oh one dash oh six nine dash four four one point oh one five for Larson Danielson, in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, thirty-four cents. Given as a total for the general of seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. So moving on to local road and streets, budget item two oh two dash five two four dash two three one point oh one two for Card Gill. This is contracted through the state for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Next civic, non-reverting, uh, item two seven two dash eight oh three dash three nine one. Sounds cool live for speakers for the sound system, in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Line item two seven two dash eight oh three dash three nine one, V sound, lighting system, in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Line item two seven two dash eight oh three dash four five one, V sound, more lighting system, in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Given of capital development, line item four oh three dash seven oh one dash four five one for J and K silk coating and more, in the amount of five thousand dollars. And now moving to redevelopment, TIF one, budget item four oh five, seven oh one, three one five for Aben Marsh, Cruzdale lift station and sewer extension project, in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, item five oh, four oh five dash seven oh one dash three one two for GeoSynTech consultants, phase two A construction and remediation completion report, in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Budget item four oh five, seven oh one, three one five, GeoSynTech consultants, NPL development site phase two A remediation, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Budget item four oh five, seven oh one, three one five, Jacob and Heffter Associates, phase two A remediation, and this division's AMB, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Continuing budget item four oh five, seven oh one, three one five for metric environmental, phase one DSA heat trick property, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighteen cents. Such an item four oh five, seven oh one, three one five, also for metric environmental, it's a phase two, limited subsurface investigation for the heat trick property, in the amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Budget item four oh five, seven oh one dash three one one, Soil Solutions, NPL wetland mitigation, in the amount of four hundred and five dollars and fifteen cents. Budget item four oh five dash seven oh one dash three one one, Soil Solutions, NPL IDN permit documentation, in the amount of six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Budget item four oh five, seven oh one, three one one for Lochner, for the NPL general engineering services, uh, three dash one dash eighteen, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Also budget item four oh five dash seven oh one dash three one one for Lochner, for the NPL general engineering services, uh, two dash twenty dash nineteen, in the amount of five thousand dollars. Given us a total redevelopment, TIF one amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Now moving to redevelopment tip two, we have budget item four oh five, seven oh one dash three one one for Lochner. And this is along North Board, old bar sewer separation, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. See on the item for redevelopment tip two, so the total for redevelopment tip two is thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. C and A for the city planner, uh, budget item six four five dash one oh two dash, I'm sorry, one oh three dash two one one. And re, card payment processing, this is annual software renewal for Adobe Creed Cloud, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. End of resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Vincent. And before, because this is a rel- resolution, before we consider motion, I would like to point out a couple of things that are very important. Uh, number one, police cars. Um, as you know, we have officers driving around with foam cut through the seats and police cars that are, um, really necessary to replace. Um, so it's great to see that you're committing to and we're all committing to, uh, public safety and making sure we're upgrading police cars so the officers can feel safe. Number two, many of you have, uh, seen and discussed the roof or the potential roof failure at the civic auditorium. And I just would like a point to point out, um, the big ass fans, uh, appropriation or encumbrance that will help, we have found with the ice on the roof, that will help, uh, reduce that and probably get a few more years out of, uh, the roof at the civic. And then also provide, you know, during the summer months when they can't have an event there because it's too hot, will help generate the fans and especially with COVID and so forth, uh, will help make the civic, uh, a more inviting place. So with that, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a sec? I do have a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, Courtney, do you know, um, for the police, um, the think tank NAS backup camera cloud, is that a one-time or annual fee?
I believe it's a one-time, I can, I can get you the contract, Tim.
Okay, I'm just, it's, we as NAS backup here and hopefully it's a one-time thing. It's, it's more of a piece of equipment you buy, you don't have to pay an annual subscription, but that price still seems really inflated to me.
I can, I can provide you with the contract.
Thanks.
You feel comfortable, Councilman Frankie, moving forward with that item?
Yeah, it's fine, I mean, you know how I feel about IT. I think when, once the contract's up, we should look at other options, but, um, it's, you know, it's four grand, depends on what the storage capacity is, but it, it seems pretty, pretty high.
So do I have a motion? I do have a motion, I believe, in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler.
Only time in its entirety.
Stop that.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cutler.
Resolution transferring funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund. Whereas it has been determined unused and unencumbered funds in the city's general fund from the sale of the fire station at one oh five Boyd Boulevard, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and the sale of a fire truck, thirty thousand dollars, remain in the city's general fund of the city of LaPorte, which funds will not be required to meet the obligations currently payable from said fund for the current year. And whereas it would be in the best interest of the city to transfer such surplus funds to the LaPorte rainy day fund. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfer of funds is approved. The sum of four hundred and three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars from the general fund to the rainy day fund. End of resolution.
Before I take a motion, Clerk Treasurer Parthoon, anything to add? These dollars will go into.
Into the rainy day fund.
Which we are desperately trying to build, uh, so LaPorte has, and again, another shout out to Clerk Treasurer Parthoon. You know, we want a savings that will protect the city as we move forward.
I'm gonna give you some stats real quick, if you give me just a second. We started out the year, uh, with a beginning balance in the rainy day fund of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents. And by the end of the year, the total in that account will be, in that fund, I'm sorry, will be five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
And again, we don't ask residents to spend their last penny in their home, paying their bills, nor are we gonna ask the city, um, to do the same. So we have to make this a priority, even during this most difficult time, to start building our savings so the city can continue to provide services. So with that, uh, any, uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Other business?
If Mayor Ri- i- if, if I could.
Attorney Otis?
Hey, I just wanted to comment on a couple of the items that, that Carol and Laura brought up tonight. Um, Laura brought up the, the airport and I had happened to talk to Ed Volk yesterday, who spent his pretty much entire adult life working to better the airport. And I was talking to him about kind of the business going on out there. And there has been a lot of, uh, jet traffic out there this year from NetJets and some of the other big charter jet services bringing business people here to LaPorte, uh, bringing families here to LaPorte. So, um, it really helped fuel sales this year out there, which I think a lot of people don't think about. Uh, and Ed is also, in, in the entire airport board, working hard to extend the runway, which would be a really big game changer for, um, the, the city. The, the other comment, Carol brought up the, the parks and particularly the boat docks. Uh, um, we've not updated, the city had not updated their contract with Hubers on Pine Lake in a very, very long time. And, um, it, it's gonna be more advantageous for the city, um, and, uh, a much better deal for the city. And then the individual that had managed the Stone Lake, uh, boat docks retired after, Carol, what, four, thirty, forty years, something? Says like that, so there's a lot of interest in those Stone Lake, Stone Lake boat docks. And, uh, you know, with everything going on around Stone Lake, it's really a great opportunity to significantly improve that. Um, they're gonna start, I, when's the park department, Carol, gonna start accepting bids on that, or quotes, pretty soon, right?
Yeah, they, they put out the request for proposals on Friday, so. They, we hopefully should have something by the next park board meeting.
Yep. And Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to comment on the bridge that went in today on Stone Lake, but that.
I was going to add to that, that the pedestrian, pedestrian, pedestrian bridge at the lake, uh, went up today and it's amazing. I mean, great work, thank you Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte, once again. Uh, anything that they've been involved in with the city has been fabulous for us. And so make sure you do have a chance to take a look at that.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Well. I'd also like to mention, uh, if you haven't heard, uh, we had a great day today for the Salvation Army. Thanks to all of you and the public and everybody engaging. I know last year we lost a tight battle, but, uh, we'll see what happens this year. Michigan City is keeping very tight lipped, but we set a new record for the city of LaPorte. I think we are now over twelve thousand dollars. Last year we were at forty-seven hundred, I think, twelve thousand this year. Uh, Ryan Seabird came in late and brought a check for twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, to help the people in this community. And whether we win or lose, and we're all about beating city, at least I am. Uh, and you imagine if both communities, uh, our friends in Michigan City and LaPorte raised close to twenty-five thousand during this time, is just amazing. So that just shows you how special LaPorte is, LaPorte County, and even our friends in Michigan City. So that's something to be proud of. Um, seven oh one maple, as we talk about the others situation, um, you know, the condemnation of seven oh one maple that began June twenty-fifth ends December twenty-fourth on Christmas Eve. Jeff Bachelor has basically become a caseworker, more than code enforcement, day and night, helping people, helping people for some time, find alternative apartments, uh, finding potential employment, finding dollars and to work for people that need help, getting a security deposit, first month's rent. And I'll tell you what, the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte, the Unity Foundation, United Way, Swanson Center, and Center Township trustee have all been working to support financially, help find pe- people housing. Um, and I'll tell you what, nobody should live in mold-infested, bedbugs, water coming through your ceiling, the criminal element that's been coming in there. And I know it'd have been much easier for people in the community to have their holiday and have their Christmas, knowing people were basically locked in that building, living in below human conditions. Um, but we all made a commitment, the council and myself, made a commitment that we're gonna start and begin setting standards in LaPorte. And we hope, I hope, that by the time Christmas hits, everybody is in a new facility and a new apartment, uh, and has a better chance at life. Um, and that's our goal and we're gonna continue to push for that. And this is only the beginning. You have all been called with flop houses, apartments that are not meeting specification. And, uh, you know, everybody deserves to live, um, in a decent, um, facility housing. The tenants also need to be held accountable if they're tearing up the places. And there'll be a balance and we look forward in 2021 to setting a tone, uh, and setting a standard for everybody that can get to rally behind. But, um, I just wanna make sure I can answer any questions there. But all the credit goes to Jeff Bachelor because he has been, uh, working his butt off day and night. And nobody will go homeless on Christmas Eve, and I wanna reiterate that. Nobody will go homeless on Christmas Eve.
But Mayor, I'll, I'll kinda echo what, what you've said and address, uh, a, a couple of things. Jeff, Jeff Bachelor's been working very hard. Uh, the, the landlord, the owner of that building, uh, is in kind of a transition. Uh, we've been in communication with the bank that has the mortgage. We anticipate kind of an agreed foreclosure or an agreed receivership. We thought that would already happen by now, it hasn't, which has slowed some things down. Uh, but we're, we're hoping to continue to work with that bank that is gonna be the receiver. They've been very good to communicate with, they just don't have authority to take over the, the building yet. Uh, a, a couple of other things I wanted to point out, because when, when Mayor has gone out and publicly talked about this, he's been criticized that he's violating the federal order about evictions. This is not an eviction, this is a condemnation. And it's very different, that the federal order only prohibits landlords from evicting tenants specifically for financial consideration. This has nothing to do with that. The conditions that, that Jeff Bachelor, that the fire department, the, uh, Indiana State Fire Marshal have identified are horrific. And so that, that is, the federal, uh, prohibition on evictions does not prohibit condemnations. And I show, uh, shared this with Mayor, that South Bend condemned the Rabbi Shulman apartment complex. It's a public housing complex, they did that just, I, I think, what, about a week and a half ago, Mayor? So this, this, we're not limited, we're not the only community doing this right now. So, um, and, and a lot of credit to, to Jeff, because he has stayed on top of it.
We have a great team and I also wanna thank all the department heads, every. We have a great team and I also wanna thank all the department heads, every employee for the city of Laporte that has constantly gone out every day with a global pandemic without complaint to make Laporte a better place. And all of you with the council that have done an amazing job. We have a great team. And this is going to be the difference as we continue to move forward. And just remember, as twenty twenty-one is around the corner, we are spending less in twenty twenty-one than in twenty twenty, yet providing more services. And so we're about fi- uh, finding efficiencies, we're about doing, uh, the, the best way we can at the lowest cost. And I think that's a great way to start twenty twenty-one. So, um, if there are no other questions or messages, and based on, uh, Attorney Nota- Attorney Otis setting the stage for a merry holiday season with his jacket, uh, we wanna thank him for that. And by the way, Attorney Otis, that is a great looking holiday festive coat.
Uh, tha- thank you, Mayor, so.
With that, I, we wanna wish everybody a safe and Merry Christmas. And do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Everybody have a great evening and a wonderful holiday. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.